Join me in the pledge, please.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we were supposed to have a student-based hearing, but there's a change in this. What do you want to know?
We are going to go ahead with the hearing. It's just the parent and the student will not be here. So, at this time, we will go into closed session to discuss this.
Okay, at this time, we'll follow statutory meeting order to present the 2012-2013 levy rate to the general attorney expense fund reg and regular levy and excess levy. Do I have a motion?
How much motion?
Please, please.
Yes.
Martin. Any question or discussion or anything you want to add?
I gave you guys a little packet and little chart. So, we are up a little bit this year. Not much, but a tiny bit. At least, we're not down this year. Tax basis is up just a tiny bit.
Just for lack of patience, Dan. I know that we discussed this before, fiscal year '11, '12. We have lost $409,000, $493,000. So, we've lost quite a bit of money here, over half a million dollars. Is that affecting us right now?
Yes.
That's this fiscal year?
Yes. And the part that is affecting us, Donna, not so much the regular taxes because the state takes a big chunk of that. That's part of the fact that the state is one of them. But the excess levy, you know, that $493,000, yeah, that definitely has a $493,000 impact.
So, about a half a million. Whereas the other, the $409,000, even though it shows here, is really not impacting us.
Well, 10% of that, just 10%.
10%.
Bertie, is there any explanation as to why our tax basis is decreasing? Is that a, does it need the Lincoln County?
No, I believe last year, Steve, there was a statewide reassessment of new rules. But it was a statewide issue last year. Everybody kind of went down. And they were projecting it to go down for three years on the road. But, I mean, it really didn't go down that much this year or did it go down all this year?
I mean, because we, I guess, were kind of optimistic of things were going to go the other direction as we were beginning to see it before. And whatever, and we want to hopefully see that rise. Now, for the next, what do you project this will be for?
Well, they had, last year, they had told us it would be for three years. But if you look at this year, we actually had an increase in the tax base. So, even though there was an increase in that particular category, there's been something else that has increased it to offset it. So, we did end up with a net increase of like $9.2 million in our tax base.
So, some of the things that have been going on within the county could have been offsetting us. What can you talk?
And then also, this little chart, I just kind of let you see the next year. You know, our current excess levy is June 2014. So, we've got to always keep that in our mind and we have to start planning for that.
I appreciate the graphics, Bertie.
You're welcome, Donna. A graph so much easier to read than all my numbers.
Do you want to be outside any questions right now? Do you accept the levy rate presented to us? How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, now, as for motion and second to suspend this further action until April 17th at 6:00 PM at Harts House. Motion by Smith, second by Wilson. How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Now, we're going to our regular meeting. I found the right paper. Okay. We will call the meeting order. I need a motion and second to approve amendments of March 6. Wilson, second by Smith. How do you vote? Public comment. That's Kim Cook.
Hi, my name is Allison. Actually, I'm a drum major in this, and I'm in a school marching band.
I'm Ellen Salmons. I'm a senior saxophone player in our marching band.
And I'm Ashley Atkins. I'm a junior trumpet player in our band.
We came today to talk to you about a field trip. It's, we are performing at Disney World. And it's, it's a big step for our band to get to perform on such a big stage. But we need some assistance getting there. The band, students and parents, we ourselves have raised over $16,000 to pay for our company for our trip. But what is holding us back is the bus. We can't afford at this point to pay for the bus. And this trip is in 11 days. We have to count down on our board.
We're very excited.
We have raised, there are 29 of us, but us and our parents have raised over $16,000. But we are about $7,000 short. We need, we have gone to the county commission meeting, and they've given us $1,000. What they've said, though, is that they will give us $3,000 more if we can get $3,000 from the Board of Education. And that will pay off our trip and make it possible for us to actually perform because we have the money to perform, which is getting there is the problem.
Would you have like to say, are you going to refer our plans for Disney while we're there? Because we have it all, you know, everything's planned out. We've, you know, we've worked really hard. And, you know, it's not a competitive parade, but we competed against thousands of schools all over the country that would love to be able to, you know, go and actually perform, you know, at Disney World in front of thousands of people. But, you know, our little band got selected to go do that and to represent our, you know, not only our county, but our state there because there are other bands from West Virginia that are going. And they'll be there and they'll see us, but they're standing on the sidelines. They're not going to get the experience of going backstage Disney and performing and, you know, getting that experience that many adults, who the musicians their whole lives haven't got to do. But as high school, we're just giving them a chance. And Disney thinks that we're, we're good enough to get there and to perform for them. We've met their standards.
The trip is April 1st through the 4th. We actually perform on the 4th. It's the future World Parade at Edco at 3:20. It's all, they have it, it's down to the minute. But to get into the parade, it's, yeah, it's not a competitive parade while we're there. But we, it's been a long process since back in the early summer to get into this parade. It's almost a competition to get in. You have to send in videos of our field show. We perform football games and competitions, videos of us in a parade. They need in detail pictures of our uniforms and they inspect all of that. And you have to beat, beat other bands to get in. So, we have, we've met all of their qualifications.
So, you went through a selection process?
Yes, a very strict selection process.
Is this a charter trust that you're using?
Bertie, can you, long running for this?
Well, my suggestion would be in our levy, you know, we have our student activities money. That that would be something that would give student activities. Yes, yes. I think that's where it needs to come from. The school is allocated, maybe $40,000 for student activities at the high school. And so, I think that's where they need to be going, gets to their principal and trying to get some of that money.
Have you talked to Mr. Fatt?
He knows that we are in need. So, we really don't know what he has left in there.
I could get mine out and report back to you guys before the board meeting is over, but did he give you an answer?
He just kind of casual, well, Kim, how's it going? That kind of thing. Well, you know, we still need some money. And then, kind of went on his way, that kind of thing. I've never come right out and give him a dollar, given him a dollar now. The students went to the county commission on Thursday. I wasn't even there. Mr. Sehajon, Ashley's dad, and he took them for me. We were on our way to the music conference. But the county commission set forth a challenge, so to speak. Is that the word they use?
Yeah, right, the word.
The county commission put forth a challenge. So, that's why we came here.
Yeah, and we did realize that there was money set aside for student activities. But this isn't just an activity like a field trip. This is a performance that even if you have had kids or grandkids in the band, they haven't had the chance to do since before the high school's consolidated.
2005 was the last time. I took a group, the Hamlin Band, while we were still Hamlin. In 2005 was the last year that anybody from our county went.
And if you have kids or grandkids who aren't in high school yet and they would join the band, they may not get the chance to do this for many years to come. So, even though there is money allocated, I think that, if I may be honest, I feel that the board should help us because it's such a big opportunity.
There's going to be thousands.
It shouldn't have to come from activity money for just field trips. I think that we should be supported.
Did your classmate there what you have to say?
She's the quiet one.
She's the quiet one, yeah. You've got something to add to?
Now, how much do you actually need?
To be able to pay off our trip, we need $3,000 from the Board of Education. And the county commission will give us $3,000 more, and that will pay off our trip.
We need a total of seven.
Yeah, and the county commission has given us $1,000 of that and will give us the other three on the condition that we can get $3,000 from the board.
I wish we knew from Ryan for sure, Mr. Sax, what he can do to help. But, you know, we've all heard complaints out in the community about what a small band we have over here since consolidation. We had more in each school before they consolidated. And I think this would raise the interest of the other children coming up and get them to want to join.
And I think it also proves that, you know, just because we are small, you know, we've, we're still good. We, you know, we competed against bands, the size of Cavill-Midland, you know, competed well with them. It's just nobody, you know, really ever hears anything about the band competitions or anything.
And it's not just our marching. We have to compete, I'm sure you should be aware of the state required ratings that we have to compete in. It's not really a competition. It's just you have to perform for judges and you have to play two pieces. And every band in the state is required to play. We've never received less than perfect ratings from all three judges since the school's been open. Many, Dustin Cooper has been in the All-State Band actually, that's where they were this past weekend. He was first in the entire state. I placed fifth in the entire state for two years. And then, I was sixth in the state one year. Ellen was 12th or 13th, 20th, sorry. Well, it's, there's a whole bunch, yeah, in the whole state. Ashley was pretty far up there in the whole state. I've been accepted, I get to perform in Europe this summer because of my musical abilities that we've gained through this band. It's not just, people look at us and say, we're small. They don't listen to how good we are. And I think that's something that should be supported.
Well, I compliment you all on the quality of your program and encouraging. I hope that Ms. Cook will continue, and I'm sure she will. So, but I also want to echo what Ms. Smith said, that we want to motivate others to get involved in our band. You know, that's been a goal we wanted. And we, last year, we talked about moving in the junior high and to build our program there. Like we do a lot of different, so I think the fact that, you know, they're doing such a good job and we want to motivate others to continue building our band and we are able to do this one way or the other.
When we have the county commission agreeing to another $3,000, I think that's wonderful that they're getting involved to help these students out. And I think that your own board should also.
You guys will be on TV right now.
I'll take pictures.
But we came by video of the performance.
Just don't bother manning your picture.
I guess probably we need to talk to Bertie and see if.
I think she's up to say what the balance is.
Only thing, only thing that bothers me, I don't want to be co-watering on anything, but we want to be sure that we don't set another precedent for other groups coming and asking for other money besides the, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we have other schools and they think they have, you know, worthy endeavors to go on trips and things. And of course, we set aside, that levy money has been set aside for this kind of activity. So, I would rather see it done through the levy. If that's not possible, maybe we can do something else, okay? But I think that would be the first step.
I agree with you.
Yeah, because that's how we've done everything else.
Don't cancel your trip just in case. Oh, no, unless they walk around.
Those people, they do.
I think this is gaining with the fine efforts.
Yeah, just stick with the balance.
Your girlfriend's there.
She's having to have your instruments, they can. During this little lull. See, it might be a few minutes before she comes back down the hall.
I thought we can actually get off for a while.
He will be here. Did you see?
No.
Well, we just estimated how long we thought it took to hear him.
Okay.
He'll probably be in around five.
There may be some extra. It's not out there. The girls can sit tight.
I've got great news. I'm not here to ask for a penny.
See, what, this is the cost, right?
It's not going to cost you a penny. I'm just here to provide you some information. It's not going to cost me or ask for a penny even down the road for some reimbursement money. Give me some upfront money so I can get reimbursed for Duval's flashers.
Would you like a copy of that, sir?
What I've got back here is a solar flashing light that I purchased for Hartz out of the SBA needs grant money. So, that didn't cost me anything either. I just wanted you to see what it looked like and what you were getting. I can program that thing to pretty much work whenever I want it to. And it's solar, so it's not going to use any energy. And the first page on the handout is my contact person, the Department of Highways. And I've got a highlighted statement there that says that Duval has already been submitted for a program. It's called reimbursable flashing beacon program where we upfront buy the flashers and then they reimburse us for our cost to install the flashing. And if this one works out okay, I'll probably get the same thing because I can program that with a laptop. And I can go around and change the school calendar so that we're not flashing the lights when they're not supposed to flash. On the second page, I gave you a copy of the state code. It is the law that, the law that refers to flashing lights on when you can have them on. And this is during school recess or while kids are going or leaving school during opening and closing hours. And it also describes how far they can be away from the school, which is 125 feet. And it talks, on page three, it talks about the advanced warning signs that are there to be installed. And on page five, it talks about that the flashing, the preferable place to put these flashing lights is with the 15 mile per hour speed zone sign. Now, if we do that, what we do is we change the sign. Instead of saying at the bottom, while schoolchildren are present, it will say when flashing. So, there's a little thing, a little bit we need to change with the sign when we install it. And the sign will be just below the light. And the bottom of the sign has to be seven foot off the ground. So, people walking don't get the light. And of course, it tells everything at the end of that page about that the beacons are the responsibility of the Board of Education and that provision of highways will furnish all the signs associated with the flashing. But with this reimbursable flashing program, I'm hoping to get Duval's flashers for basically for free. But I probably won't know until summertime. And we're talking about $6,000 per school, so it's not cheap to buy these things. And in the last couple pages, just gives a description of what the school signs say, what it says if you've got a flasher, what it says if you don't have a flasher, distances and those kind of things. And they've been to the Hartz location and they've been to the Duval location. There's some concern about the Duval location, especially the sign in the curve. He's willing to move that sign. I believe he's willing to move that sign to the other end of Valley Four. In other words, it put it more in a straight stretch. There's a piece of property there, I believe that Mrs. Stowers owns. And of course, there's a piece of property just before that that a group of individuals own that might donate us a piece of property to put it on.
They might.
I've talked to one of the others. I've talked to one of the others and he's agreed. But really, over there, if we could get it just on the other side of the fence there at Valley Four, that might be a better location. And I believe that he's going to prove just where us to put it. The other signs are where it probably needs to be, so we're in good shape on the other end. And he's willing to move the warning sign on up the road a little bit because of our football field, our athletic facilities there. He's willing to move the warning sign on up the road a little bit. So, they've been real helpful in providing information and seeing if we get these things done.
And you said, as far as programming that, you said that's something you will do?
That's something I'll do with the laptop. And what my intentions are to do is I'll program that thing to operate about 30 minutes while parents are bringing kids in, while the buses are bringing the men of the morning. For example, at Hartz, it's going to be probably from 7:10 to 7:40 in the morning. And at Hartz, it'll be something like from 2:20 to 2:50 in the evening, something close to that. And this thing has a switch on it, which in the case at Duval, let's say they're walking up to the ball fields. This switch is mounted on the pole. And let's say they want the flasher to operate while kids are walking to the ball field. Someone can go over to the pole, turn the switch on, and it'll operate until they put it back in automatic. So, you could turn them on without my programming it because, you know, if it's raining, they're not going to go to the ball field or be on the playground. You could manually go to the pole and turn them on if you so choose.
Is there security that anybody can't turn it on in the night?
Well, you know, there's not the, there's not a locking device on this thing. Well, you know, I probably could put a lock on it where you could know.
Or you could put it inside for night locks.
Yeah, I could do that. If that was a concern.
I'll figure something.
I can, I can take care of that. Yeah, we've got to keep Larry out. That's about all I have left. You're welcome.
You did good, Dana.
Okay, we'll go back to the fans.
Bertie, you want to say? Okay. This is our levy allocations that go out to the school. And this was their balance on February 29th. And I highlighted Lincoln County High School, their remaining student activity is $8,529. Now, that money is for exactly what they're talking about, you know, trips and the band and for all those things. But now, it's just getting Mr. Sax to give you the money because we let them, you know, manage their money. But there is money there. And I don't know that he has something already planned out. But that is their balance.
Can we possibly put this back on the agenda for Thursday and try to talk to Mr. Sax and see if he will either give him the money or at least split it with us? You know, if he'll give him part of it and we get, at least the county commission would still be inclined to go ahead and match us.
The county commission didn't give us a deadline, like a badge.
They didn't give a deadline, but there is a deadline that we have to meet to pay for a trip.
When is that?
When is it actually?
It's actually this past Saturday.
I'm sure it's.
But they're really nice. We had to pay $700 deposit down, and we raised enough to pay for that, too. So, we had done that already. The balance was due this past Saturday. But they're really, really nice. And the lady on the phone, she said, I know what it's like. She said, we'll be patient with you. She said, we won't cancel this on you.
I'm like Caroline, I'd like to see if they're going to exchange events possible.
It would be Thursday. It's just a couple of days, you know.
Should I ask Mr. Sax or is that something that you all want to ask?
I think you need to know.
I didn't even know there was such a fund like this or I don't know what we have.
We certainly want to see the band go. And I certainly encourage and use construction. But we want to be consistent in how we handle trips.
We'll have to make you talk.
We treat everybody fairly.
Well, we may as well.
And they raised a lot of money.
We can let them know before the day is over.
So, at 1:00 Thursday?
Yeah, 1:00.
You've got out that one, Ash.
Well, you know, they've raised the majority of these signs. They should be commended for that.
And we had very little time to, you know, to do it because we had to wait for Disney's approval. And that $16,000 that we've raised, we've raised it ourselves. We had one $25 donation from a business. The rest of that was all us. The rest of that was all us.
That's unbelievable.
That's tremendous.
Have you heard of any student group doing that?
I think we just need to be consistent in how we handle it.
You might tell Mr. Sax the board recommend that you come.
That's a very subtle method.
I just want to be sure that the commission will still match it, you know, if it is Mr. Sax that gives it. And I think they will.
Yeah. I think as long as it comes through the school system. But so if he won't give us the money, what do we do then?
We'll put it on the agenda to be voted on on Thursday. And we meet at 1:00 so you'll know the voting at school.
Yay. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proud of you, girls.
Get rid of the question.
No. The rest of the questions are there. Thank you all very much.
There should be some other extra X's and Y's.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your work. Next is administrative items.
Sure.
Maybe we need a vote.
I need a motion.
Say.
Okay, item A, the following adult students to ride the school bus. B, out-of-county student transfers for the 2012-13 school year. These two particular students, just for your information, I think that you need to know. These two students, they have never been in our system. They've been in private schools and so they are going to be going to be on here. C, an agreement with the town of Hamlin to provide the prevention resource officer at Lincoln County High, July the 1st, 2012 through June 30th, according to the provisions of the agreement. This is a grant from the juvenile justice authority.
Is this a matching grant? It's a matching grant. What is it? Half and half. I had a question about, I guess I just don't understand the wording on page three of the yellow part of the agreement. Wait a minute. I'm sorry, page two, page two. And one point zero seven. The pro shall not function as a school disciplinary or safety officer. It is not the responsibility of the pro to intervene with the normal disciplinary actions of the school system or to be used as a witness to disciplinary procedures in the school. Now, that doesn't mean that he can't come here and be a witness, just like we had a hearing tonight and he was here. But it says as a witness to disciplinary procedures in the school. Is that just limited to the school itself? I guess my concern is, he can't be used as a witness?
Well, I just think that means witness as in coming forth to offer evidence. It's to be in there when one of the principals, discipline is a student, he's not called in there to...
To see it.
To see it. As maybe as a form of intimidation or something. That's not their role?
Like he was here, but that was because it's already been turned over to their system.
Well, he would have been here because this was a hearing.
Yeah, and it's in third hands.
He can be a witness in a hearing, a normal disciplinary session.
But he couldn't be called there and said, "Did you see this?" That's not what this means.
That's what it seems.
I mean, my question is, if he's in the school and he sees something happen and they have a disciplinary hearing at the school or, you know, they meet with the assistant principals, he can't be called there and asked about that?
He'd probably be asked, but he couldn't sit in on the decision.
I guess my question was, what is witness? You see what I'm saying?
I just wonder if that means my normal routine, you know, things that occur at school.
I guess if it's the same agreement as, is this the same agreement we have for pretty much, then whatever it is, it's already been worked out. So whatever they're doing is this, I guess, whatever this is.
Whatever this is, okay?
Because we have to just keep in mind that he is a law officer. Right, and we just, we pay for this out of law.
It just comes out of our general promise.
Don't do them though.
I think what it's saying here, Donna, is he's not doing it. He's just not to make the decisions, intervene in that. That's what it sounds to me like.
Well, maybe that's what it means because that really is not what it says to me. But I mean, whatever, however they interpret this, I guess it's working, so I just don't want to disagree with something. But he can't do this already, he's doing it.
The way I understand this, it is, he is not going to be part of the normal disciplinary procedure for, that the school system, that the principal and the other administrators provide. And he's not going to even be called in to witness whatever their disciplinary procedures are. They're, you know, the principal and the other administrators will follow our school procedures for disciplinary purposes. He's not even there to witness that, whatever that is.
But he could be called to be a witness to something.
I think his role is not, his role is not to witness whatever the disciplinary action.
He's not a member of the discipline team. He's just there, but he could be called as a witness.
Yes, I think that he could be called as a witness, but he's not there to witness whatever decision.
Who developed this agreement?
Original?
Well, a gentleman from the town of Hamlin, Eddie Baker, who is a police officer in Hamlin, and I guess he was a resource officer at the school last year, sometime after Mr. Lawrence started. He's the one who was writing the grant to get this paid for.
I'm just curious, I mean, this language must have come from some...
It looks like maybe Rebecca Tender, maybe, because it looks like an attorney's writ of this agreement.
It came with the grant or something.
Yeah, it came with the grant.
Yes.
Well, never mind.
We're ass. We're ass.
Never mind, Michael. I just was reading through that and I just didn't understand it.
Well, the thing that, I mean, I'm kind of like gone in a way, but then I come to the word procedures, disciplinary procedures, which kind of differentiates that in my mind as being a witness to something that's happened that he might have, like the actual procedures himself. Well, I was on your side, but now I'm not.
So you say yes or no?
I think that what he's doing, that he can be a witness in something like we've heard him say numerous times that they want.
That's fine.
But the word procedures to me is the key word.
Right.
I can read the way still here. If they know it, as long as they know what we're doing, that's fine.
That's my answer.
And I'm sure they did.
Want to make sure that you're on the same, that you have the same thing I had. Okay, D. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
May I go here?
You may go in.
To award, to award a beer to Z Young M, Inc., to provide architectural engineering services for the design of a handicap accessible walkway at LCHS, partially funded through the Federal Highway Administration's Transportation Enhancement Program.
A thing that's familiar about this before.
Yes. Yes, he has. E, an outstate trip for LCHS automotive students to the University of Northwestern Ohio Automotive College in Lima, Ohio, April 20th and 21st, 2012, to participate in a scholarship test, transported by county-owned vehicle and all expenses paid from the automotive class funds.
Sounds great.
F, an agreement with Armstrong Utilities, Inc., for a fiber commercial service agreement according to the provisions of the agreement. You have any questions you'll have to ask Mr. Daley?
It's too complicated.
It's too complicated for a call.
This is the one that we'd like to make sure that goes to you.
This is the one we're, that Armstrong has agreed to let us defer on payments March, April, May, and June, payments of this year. They'll provide a service, but they'll let us defer the payments until we actually, we get a decision on the appeal process. This comes about that this last month under, it's been a month and a half, under appeal or under review for the last 471 application. There's a problem on the first application, which is, I'm trying to make this a short story, 470 application, I did not have internet access checked on that. Armstrong is a cable provider and during the time that I put in the 470 and the 470 application, there was a change, the schools and library made a change, which allowed the cable providers to provide internet. So we entered into a contract with them. Then when it come up under review, the 470 internet provider wasn't checked. So this will have to go through a review process. And that process could take up to, it will be a minimum year. The last one I've been under, I've got one out, spent five years and I'm hoping to see the rainbow, end of the rainbow of that one, but it could take four or five years before we would receive our money. What they've agreed to do is defer our payments until we get a decision. If we get a decision in our favor, then that waits 60 days, we get our check, and then we'll be able to pay the amount of that. If not, we still will owe them that. But they're just giving us a break here of this $9,000 amount for five months. That's, that's what this contract disagreement is.
And it's no increase in fees, it's the same, it's the same thing. We made some money for it.
We get the money, we're going to have to pay it either way, but they're willing to wait for the money to give us a chance of going through the appeal process. And I can't appeal it until we get, until we actually get the denial letter. I've never received a denial letter yet, but I'm 99% certain it's coming, just from talking to the reviewer.
Okay. And G, just disregard G. We did that one on last. Yes. Yes.
These people don't have a trip. We just approved a trip.
Same one.
I made a mistake listening.
H, Marshall University students, Carrie Davis and Leanne Lambert, to perform observations at Hartz 3K 8, second semester. I, an agreement with Armstrong Utilities, Inc., for a wide area network known as WAN, according to the provisions of the agreement. Again, if you have questions, Mr. Daley.
And that is in that...
That's what we got.
Too long. He didn't get it until today, so I couldn't provide it to you.
So everything's okay with you, right, Dana?
It's good. It's basically your internet to agreement with Armstrong Utilities or Armstrong Cable to provide us a data line from Hartz, at Hartz, Ranger, Guyan Valley, West Hamlin, the Central Office, and Hamlin. They're providing a data line to the Lincoln County High School and it's part of our data connections here that we receive in. They are data lines, but they don't really give us internet. We get internet a different way, but they're giving us the data services to their schools without, and that's just part of the WAN. We're entering in, we're putting in application today. That's just part of the network, the wide area network. There's the back ended network, which will be a line from the high school to building six in Charleston, which is, we're going to get that from Frontier because Armstrong could not provide that. They couldn't provide it in a costly fashion. Their bid was $4,000 for 100 meg and $4,000 per month. And we can get a one gigabit line for 2,500. So that, we'll be entering into that agreement. We'll be buying it off Horizon rather than Armstrong. And this has all went through the E-Rate process and as soon as you all sign that, I'm going to put in application to get the schools and libraries to reimburse us probably 82%. The amount of this contract for these four schools is around roughly $140,000 per year.
So he's watching the clock. J, just strike that out. K, hold the suspension without pay effective March the 7th, 2012, and determination of a contract for service personnel effective immediately as provided for in West Virginia Code 18A-2-8 for violations of the Employee Code of Conduct.
Is that the same person as two weeks ago? So what's the name of the person? Okay, apologies. I'll get a right one. I'll get a right one.
It's hard to follow.
I knew it.
Now, this individual is not requesting an hearing.
Anyone got any more questions? I'll ask for a vote on that administrative item.
Yes.
Oh, yep, yes. Okay, finance, Burtie?
Okay, we have invoices, $968,402.90. I have copies of everything. You have any questions? Ask now or I'll say afterwards. I'll be here afterwards. Okay.
You don't have a question?
I understood, actually. I think I understood. I think I understood. Or I didn't know enough to ask.
That's kind of a small amount, you know, smaller than usual.
I move. I move.
May I? All we have, folks?
Okay, section A is employment of short and long-term professional personnel. Section B, employment of professional personnel. Section C, transfer of professional personnel. D, section, transfer of service personnel. E, employment of substitute service personnel.
Are these people now, who are being hired, some of them for 2012, 2013, are they already working?
Yes, they, if you, if you will look, it says 2011, 12, then ran under it for 12 and 13. So you're hiring them for the rest of this year and for next year. F, employment of extracurricular personnel. G, leave of absence.
G, leave of absence for two people. H, retirement or resignations. I, non-renewal of substitute service personnel in violation of Lincoln County School Policy forty-one twenty point oh four, and non-renewal of short, long-term professional personnel. And then two, abolish position service at Duval, twelve seventy-one, that's the code for that particular posting, a COO to pending the return of the regular employee. And then we made a correction to the December sixth, two thousand eleven minutes for Keisha Clay, Ranger Elementary, eight-two, special ed was effective December seventh, two thousand eleven. Please wait that twelve.
These non-renewal of substitute service personnel and the long-term professional personnel. Since I don't know their policy.
I brought a copy.
Okay. Is it mainly because they didn't feel called out?
Yes.
That's usually the main problem.
Yes, yes. We, and we also give them a warning letter according to policy when they do not, you know, answer or refuse. And if they do not answer or they refuse after their warning letter, then we recommend termination. But that's stated in the letter that we send them, would give them an opportunity.
So we pretty much have to say that.
Yes. Because we do give them opportunity after they get the warning.
Any more discussions? Can I ask a question in a second?
My pleasure.
Briefly. One second. How do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, comments, concerns, names already, Dr. White, Hartz Intermediate School?
Mr. McDowell's here now.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna take care of Dell's first.
I'll actually, no.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I didn't see, I'm coming, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have heard that it might be an especially long meeting to start.
You're talking to three.
I wanted to talk about two things. One is, there's a draft of a grant for Benedum to help with the counseling program. But I thought I'd just sort of zip through with you, see if there are any questions, and then then ask you to endorse it and approve us moving forward. Back in, in January, when we learned that we were gonna have to cut counselor positions, one of the thoughts was, maybe we could find some money. So we've been out looking for some, and one of the sources that we've gone to is the Benedum Foundation. This is a, it's still in a draft form, but it's, it's pretty close. It would be a request to them for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for two years that would go toward the counseling program. And when we figured out exactly how to define all that, because the counselor's salaries are sort of in one part of the budget, and then everything else is sort of lumped into what the school system does. You know, if somebody needs some supplies, it's not a separate thing to the counseling program. So what we did, I think probably the easiest way to figure this out, if you look on page eleven, start with the budget, and then we'll go back through. If, if we're not able to come up with any funds, currently what, what the board has done, there are eight positions that would be funded. Five of the positions are funded through the state aid formula, and then there are three other positions which are funded by the board that are not state, state aid formula, three FTPs, I have a call, rather than physicians. So what we, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get back to the original thirteen positions, which would mean that, especially in the elementary schools, you have a counselor who would be dedicated to the younger kids and a counselor who would be dedicated in the middle school. And the thought is that if you just have one person at a pre-K eight, probably most of their time is gonna be with the scholarly middle school kids, and the elementary kids are not gonna get any counseling. So that's what we're trying to do. So the way this, the way we've constructed this budget, of course, it's a budget and we don't have all the money yet, but the way we've constructed it is that we're asking Benedum for a hundred and twenty thousand. The Board of Education with the state formula is putting in three hundred thousand, and then another a hundred and eighty thousand, which is non-state formula funding. And then we're trying to get a hundred thousand from the state legislature, forty-five thousand from the State Board of Education, twenty-five thousand from the County Commission, and ten thousand from community donations. And whatever we didn't get, that would just impact the number, we have to back it off from those thirteen, that would be the goal. So what, this is, this is the budget that we're proposing to present to Benedum with the hope that we fund all thirteen positions, but we're asking them for a hundred and twenty, which would fund two additional positions in addition to the eight that we have down there now. So it makes sense. So I know it's a little confusing.
Well, you're asking for two positions, and you're assuming that their salary would be sixty.
That's, yeah, the sixty thousand is what.
Kind of like.
We crunched, we crunched them off there, so we tried to figure it out. Heard it was a great help to me, for figuring all these things. So that's, I'd like to guess, I might have to tell this.
Well, would you review that again?
Sure.
Numbers, okay, Benedum's gonna, the hundred and twenty would be two.
Would be two, and that's, and we're asking them for two years with the thought that, you know, if we get to the point where we can put this as part of a levy, that's not gonna happen for next year or the following year. There's not gonna be any extra money coming in for that. So we're asking Benedum for a two-year commitment at a hundred and twenty thousand a year, which would be two positions. With the sixty thousand.
With everything, all benefits. And then through the state formula, we receive three hundred thousand dollars, which is enough for five positions. Now, the other hundred and eighty thousand dollars funded by the board.
That's over-formular positions.
And have you, do we have those now?
That is not on our budget now, right?
We are gonna have those next year. We're carrying those people next year.
Okay.
So we're, we're carrying a hundred and eighty thousand already that's not funded in counselors. And, you know, I'm, I'm trying to warn everybody, you know, there's more coming next year, there's more cuts. So I would not count on this hundred and eighty thousand dollars being here next year for these counselors.
And we used to talk about next year, what's the school?
I'm talking about thirteen, fourteen. We've already made all the cuts we can for twelve, thirteen, but I think going into thirteen, fourteen, we're gonna have to take up real good look at everything again.
And this is twelve, this is twelve, sorry.
Right, I understand. Now, where we are now, the actions that we took back in the spring, is, have we now eight positions that we've advertised or have failed right now?
Trying to think. We just added two back tonight, okay? Set eight, trying to think how many that makes.
That should be seven.
We added two back tonight. Yeah, those hacks, we adjusted.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, yes, okay.
So that all schools will have, will have certain.
You might look on page six of this thing, I don't, it might make it more confusing, but page six is the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And if you look on the far right-hand column, you'll see that Hartz Primary and Hartz Intermediate have one counselor to serve those. And Guine Valley Middle and Ranger have one counselor. And West Hamlin and Midway has one counselor. Hamlin Pre-K has one, Duval Pre-K has one, and then there's two counselors and a social worker at high school.
So that's eight.
That's the eight.
And a, and a social worker.
And the eight includes the social worker.
The eight includes the social. Is it this or that? You've got two counselors, is it in slash, one social worker?
Well, the, don't count where it says total elementary, middle, but.
Oh, okay.
Where it says five, five, nine, one, that's not a position, that's deterioration.
One, two, three, four, five. Two kinds of past and a social worker.
Including the social worker. And that's where we stand right now, right?
And that included the social worker?
Yes. But grid's figured.
Okay, because as far as counselors, we said, and then we live into social workers, which is eight.
Yes, but are we, where we planned to be when we took the actions in the spring?
It's still over three, we're still over three strokes.
Now, but we were at thirteen, so we're five years.
Yes.
And that's the goal, the goal is to get back to thirteen.
But now, what your proposal is, would add two more, correct?
With Benedum. Benedum would add two more, but there's hope, there's hope that maybe we'll get some money from the state legislature, the State Board, the County Commission, community donations, which would put those three more positions.
Right, we could go with the, even five in the.
In the end, we got thirteen, we'd be back up to thirteen.
I just wanna clarify now, should, I don't wanna rain on your parade or anything, but should we, Benedum approve two positions and things don't work out, I'm assuming that that's the board within, the Secret Committee would make a recommendation where those two would be the board that were okay then? I mean, hopefully we'll get five, and if that kind of record is work, but they're only two, is it understood that the Secret Committee of the Board would make decisions for them?
No, we think so.
It's not written in here.
It's not written in here at this point, we could, I mean.
Well, I mean, I didn't know we had or not.
No, we hadn't, we hadn't written it in there.
And the Benedum, that doesn't bear, have any. If we do nothing, or we get no extra money, the Benedum Fund could come through anyway.
Yes.
There's no bearing on what we.
Right, right, they're not, the way the Benedum folks work is they have a project officer that gets assigned to your grant, and one of the things that that, the person we're working with has said, I mean, their hope is, if they fund the hundred and twenty, that that might help leverage some of these other groups to do it. But it's not the opposite, it's not, they're not saying, you gotta come up with all this other before they do it.
Do you know whether they have a history of funding personnel?
Oh, we're not calling it personnel.
I mean, all right, funding, funding people working.
Well.
I mean, in any organization.
Sure, they, we're couching it as it's, this is the, the counseling program, and we're short this money in the counseling program. And the way the school system has set up the counseling program is, sort of salaries are one thing, and then everything else is sort of in the mix. So that if I.
Would you tell them this was? I mean, just out of curiosity.
They know that it's for people's, but it's part of the.
Counseling.
It's part of the whole package, I'm trying to think of words. I mean, we're not, you know, we're not, we're not saying any untruths or anything.
Well, no, I didn't, I didn't even mean to infer that.
Right, no, I know your word.
I just, I had a little bit of experience with Benedum, and at the time I had experience with them, they weren't really crazy about funding people, per se.
Right.
They would fund community organizations and getting community organizations together and that type of thing, and specific projects, but hopefully they've expanded their.
The person who's the project director seems very hopeful and encouraging. So would you like me to go through any more of this, or is it just the budget? It's really the key part?
Well, the timeframe.
Okay, the timeframe is, of course, we're asking for a hundred and twenty thousand a year for two years. They meet in June. We would submit this as soon as the board approves it and we finish tweaking this to Benedum, and at their June meeting, they make a decision. So we would know in June. That's the soonest they meet. They met last week. They weren't ready for us next week. We weren't ready for that.
Well, I think we probably all appreciate your work on this, and whatever committee worked with you.
Well, there are a lot of people who put a lot of time in.
This committee, we hope, we hope it's funded.
We do too.
I read one thing here, sir. On the, the other funding sources for the additional three.
Yes.
That would require a two-year plan to create.
Well, I don't think any of those organizations would give you two, I'd like, if we, say we got some money.
It's gonna take one year at a time.
We have to get one year at a time. Because the legislature's not gonna do a two-year.
Wes, want me to just take it in, if we're able to come up with some other source?
Yes.
Go from there, if not, we'd have to back off.
We'd have to back off and be where we are sort of now. Well, I guess what I hope is that the board would approve this and endorse this going forward, or kind of, and ask them for a hundred and twenty thousand for two years.
You need a vote? Think you need a vote? Is it on the agenda? Well, it's on the agenda as a comment and a concern, or a, as a, it's signed in. We can vote Thursday, but soon enough for Mr. McDowell.
Sure.
We do need to get Thursday, just to make sure that we're legal, like we're supposed to.
Would you like me to come Thursday to answer any more questions, to give you some more between now?
I'm not thinking. We can just get.
Okay, you're welcome. Can I, can I give you one more? Yeah. This is on the Lincoln County Teen Parenting Program that we started, and I just wanted to let you know where we were with. This is an evaluation. The board approved us doing a program for pregnant teens and parenting teens at the high school. One day, we initially, when we initially started out, we were gonna, one day a month, we were gonna do something for pregnant teens, and one day a month, we were gonna do something for parenting teens. And, of course, you never know how many are gonna be any through, because the pregnant teens have their babies, and they have the parenting teens. So what happened was that we only had one young woman and the pregnant teens. So it made sense, rather than to bring all these people and just, this being perverse, and she was a little intimidated by being the only person there, all these presenters, that we would combine things together, and so we, we started with one session for the pregnant teens and one session for the parenting teens, and then we combined them at this meeting, and that's what we're gonna do for the rest of the year. We're just gonna have pregnant and parenting teens together in one group. So this is the evaluation, we had eleven people there. There's no financial outlay from the board, which is great. All the people who come in as presenters are coming in as volunteers. Tri River Transit is transporting the pregnant, no, the parenting teens with their babies, because one of the goals was to have the babies there too. So Tri River's doing that, and they're not charging anything for that service, so. And we're considering the possibility of continuing this in June and July, since our program's going on at the school. And that was a question that we asked people who, who were the last one, and they were pretty favorable, if you look down at the bottom of the first page, eight of the kids said yes, that they would consider coming to. said yes, that they would consider coming to one of the sessions. I just wanted to talk about some of the things that have cropped up that I think seem to me to be really good. We, what we did with this one, we took each one of the individual sessions that we were doing, and we asked what was the most important thing they learned, and what they would do differently based on the session. And just thought I'd share some of the things that came out. One of them was on developmental milestones, to try to get young parents to understand what's happening with their kids at different times of their kid's life. And some of the things that people said was that they would do more activities with their child, they, they would now know the signs that the child gives to the parent, they know how to deal with him and their anger at the same time, but that was a pretty interesting thing. They would spend more time trying to teach my child how to advance with his hands and brain development, they recognize cues that the child gave him better. So, those kinds of things. We did a session on food labels. Comments were that they would check to see what all is actually in the food, which was pretty important. They read the ingredients when they, the baby started to eat food. We're doing sessions each time on something called Brain Under Construction, which talks about how the brain develops in a baby. Some of the things people said they were gonna do would be read and talk to the child more, do everything I can do to do the best in the next five years. We're also doing a session on money management. People said they would save at least a little bit of my money and not spend any more money on useless products. God, that was a real... And then finally, the last time, we did something on domestic violence, and we asked what people would do. Some of the things that came up were things like, let somebody know where I am at all times, and realize different types of abuse and speak up more, so...
And don't beat your wife.
And don't beat your wife. I think they kind of sort of realized that.
I'm sorry.
So we're gonna, we'll continue doing these evaluations, and I, the thought would be at the end of the program, we'd sort of take them and put them all together and share them if you can. But I'm really encouraged that the youth who are participating are saying such positive things about what they're learning.
Rick, are you thinking about, I mean, next year with this program?
Well, we sort of are.
I mean, now that you, you haven't established, the kids know about it, you know?
The kids know about it.
I mean, we, not that we want a whole lot of participation, you know?
Right, exactly.
But I mean, we want a service to be...
One of the challenges is sort of to how we, how we continue coordinating this thing, because at this point, we're doing this all volunteer, you know? We've got some donated funds that pay for snacks. I don't know if we try to enlarge it next year, or Tri River would continue to do this for free.
Well, I mean, if you just continue the program.
As it is.
Yeah.
We'd like to. I mean, I think it's important, goodness. The one piece that we haven't pulled off yet that I, that I, I'm hoping we can do, and I'm not sure exactly how to move it forward, one of the things we're hoping is that we can do baby well checks each time there at the school, because the babies are there. But we haven't been able to work that out with the primary care center. I think some of their providers feel like they haven't had enough training. The providers who are at the Panther Clinic don't feel like they have enough training in doing well checks for young babies, so it's gonna be, we'll have to get another provider that comes from the primary care center out to the school, and those logistics haven't been worked out. But I, I just think it would be really positive to be able to provide that, please. So we'll give you another one, and as we get closer, I guess if we think that we might try to do it for the summer, we come back to you and ask permission to sort of fold it into whatever's happening at the high school.
Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Dale, we'll come. Action Dallas, not a tag team.
You know you're on tape.
Thank you, Rick. Go put together.
Thank you.
There you go.
We'd just like to give you an update on the bond referendum, as well as give you an opportunity to ask any questions or express any concerns you have regarding such.
We've given a packet here, and on the left-hand side at first sheet, which fifteen different efforts, yeah, some of them, the others will need to take place, I won't go through each of those, but we get out to number four, the board's already hired bond counsel and financial advisor. We're about to begin number five, the community meetings. This starts the evening at West Hamlin Elementary at six thirty. All these meetings will be at six thirty. We have, of course, given Sean a copy of the, and he's, he's gonna be attending some of those, so we think that's good. We think it's really important that people have an opportunity to share what they want in their school. Then if, then tomorrow evening, at, again, at six thirty, we have a meeting with the community committee, committee, the CEFP committee, and that committee tomorrow will give an overview of the past plan, which is recent, you know, it's not an old plan, so it's something to build on. And then we will encourage those people to attend the community meetings, and we will, of course, encourage board, when you can come, you know, you can't be everywhere all the time, but we certainly love seeing you. And the whole purpose, if you flip over to the other side of the packet, there's a real simple end up, and we're gonna give this at every meeting. Some people might want to vocalize what their interests are. Some people may not want to, but we want people to have an opportunity to write down any suggestions for their community, for their school, and then we'll be pulling all of that together and sharing with the board.
This whole packet here on the right, you're giving out these three things?
Oh, no, the, no, we're just doing this. Now, with the CEFP committee tomorrow, they'll, they'll get the same packet and get the same information. We have, I wanna look at that second listing of meetings. We think those are all on track, and we're going to suggest, though, and Mrs. Lucas, Jeff and I, we've met, and we're, we're thinking about Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, as a meeting of the CEFP committee, come back together. Once these, once these community meetings are open, and we give them all the information from those meetings, then they can look at the current plan, and then look at suggestions that have been made, and then begin the process that they have to come up with a new plan, if it needs to be tweaked or whatever. Then we're looking at May the first. Now, you already have a board meeting scheduled at that, and we're suggesting that we have a work session prior to that meeting, where we just focus on this topic. And by then, we'll have all this written information from the different community meetings, and we think it's really important for the board, of course, to weigh in with your best thoughts, not that we'll make final decisions then, but weigh in at that point so that you can take all that information and the CEFP recommendations, and then to move toward a plan.
No, so tomorrow evening, then we'll begin the process by reviewing our current CEFP plan, as well as going over what these community meetings will look like, that, you know, that process as well. So not only is the CEFP committee invited tomorrow evening, but also our principals from each of the schools will be here as well.
We've encouraged all the principals at several principal meetings, you know, and you need to be involved, and to have representatives from your school that will be at these meetings, so that we can get the best thoughts from our staff, but certainly from the community people. So, do you all have a suggestion on that May the first date of what time you might wanna come together for a work session prior to your regular meeting, which will be at six o'clock?
What, what do you anticipate on our work session?
Well, at least, yeah. Yeah, we, I mean, it's, it's, by then, we'll begin to, we'll have a lot of information to at least look at.
Okay, we'll begin, we'll start kind of putting our plan together as far as what's gonna look like this fall, the rollout, as far as advertising, you know, what's gonna occur.
What would you all suggest? Do you have a suggestion as to how long? I mean, do we need to start a quarter?
Well, what about a couple hours? Does that, does that work? Okay? And maybe we could have a snack or something, you know?
Now, this May the first, is this just to discuss things, or the board would act?
Yeah, no, the board would not act. This is just purely discussion.
Talk about what you found out.
Yeah, but it, but it rolls as board members, obviously, who's representing everybody countering them, so you need to weigh in with your best thoughts, and that would be before plan is really put together, you know? We will make sure that you have that opportunity. You will also have in hand, within, any suggestions that anybody has given. We're gonna type those up, and we'll have them in a form that you can look, you know, and our, our thought is, all ideas are good ideas, okay? Obviously, you can't do everything everybody wants, or that's not the real world, but we wanna make sure that people have an opportunity to be heard. And so we'll have ideas typed up that come from these different meetings, and you'll have that in hand at that meeting. We're certainly open to suggestions as we go through this process. We don't have an ironclad way we're gonna do it. In fact, we'll learn at West Hamlin Elementary and probably tweak what we do at the next school, but we'll make sure that they have an opportunity to be heard and to give the best thoughts. And we're really hoping, newspaper, we're really hoping that the people in the community not only know about these meetings, but they, they show up. And this is really an important, you know, when you think about building a school, or renovating a school, or whatever, that's a, that's really important in, as far as the whole community is concerned, so. So we think we will have participation. We don't know about large crowds, but we hope to have a good number of people, so.
And that's really, the only concern I have, is that we need, or I think we need to publicize these meetings more than we have. And I know at the school level, they may be sending things home, advising their parents, and I don't know that, but I would like to see it publicized more for the general community at large. I'm talking about people who don't have kids at school, or kids are, you know, whether they be seniors, or those are, if they have kids, I don't know. But I don't know that they're aware, for instance, that there's gonna be a meeting at West Hamlin this week, and however that's done, I mean, that's up to the administration, whether we have ads in the newspaper identifying these, or that, like you, I think we need to encourage people to come out. Eventually, we're gonna be wanting them to vote for it, and I'd hate for them to say that, well, we never had any input into what went on.
What about our call-out system? Could we, the message we put on it for each school?
Yes, Mr. King, I actually use School Messenger, he's using, he's PTO, he's...
But I mean, are all schools...
There would be newsletters, yes.
Yeah, that's, you know, you're getting those, but I'm talking about the people who aren't affiliated directly with schools that are, that are eventually gonna vote.
Well, we could, we could put in Saturday's paper that comes up, plenty of time.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just thinking, you know, if I were living in the West Hamlin community and I didn't have kids in school or something, this meeting could go by, I couldn't really know about it, and it, I'd be something that, you know, I'd be interested in one of these days, I'm gonna come back and say, well, you know, I would have liked to, and then I might have had some thoughts about it, but I'm gonna pay my tax dollars to do some of these things. I'm not, I don't have children in school, but I'd like to get my two cents.
It was in the paper twice. I ran a full story when you gave me this schedule, and then I ran a second story in our special edition three weeks ago. That's as much as I can do, I mean, it's, you know...
I understand from the, from the newspaper standpoint, I'm talking about from our standpoint, and I'm not sure that we shouldn't have something that just focuses on, you know, identifying the, the importance of it, that there's gonna be a community meeting on the potential bond next, two, Thursday, whatever.
Does West Hamlin have a sign out front, that they can all put it on the front?
They do.
They can put it on their sign tomorrow. Does anyone have one out here?
I'm just thinking as in future, as we get to each one of these, I just, you know, I, it just seems to me like we're not going out there and identify, or making everybody aware that these are going on. I mean, I understand, you know, those of us that know what's going on, we read the paper and we hear what you guys say all the time, and we know that these meetings are, and the people on the committees know it, and I expect that the principals are sending things home, or maybe the phone messaging system, everybody there knows, but in order to pass these kind of things, you're gonna be looking for a constituency that may not know. That's the only concern I have. I would express that to...
Well, that's a great point.
We could probably, of course, but we could probably do like a vault mailing, you know, out to people, and do it through the, like a journal, and I'm sure it won't be cheap.
I don't know. Once again, I think...
Well, you can, yeah, you can do that, as long as it doesn't say vote for.
Yeah.
Or back to your...
But you could have the list of the meetings as to when they are, you know, where they are, to discuss it. All citizens. So, you know, we...
We can't spend taxpayer money to...
Can we spend taxpayer money to put an ad in the newspaper identifying, I'm nice if you know what I mean.
Still standing on mine. I think as long as you're not asking them to vote, you can spend some money. You can't ask them to vote.
Just like we run our top gear levy.
Only informational items.
Right.
With the schedule of the meetings and where, you know, something like that.
And it's been in the chamber twice.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd say the same process you use in the regular levy, the special levy, you know, getting people out. We have, in all fairness, we have, we have taught different kinds of principals and some of those folks to try to, you know, to, in fact, we, we were a little bit arbitrary when we said we wanted a principal, we wanted these two teachers there, we wanted service personnel, and three parents, now, that's, I mean, that's just the beginning, but with your own staff, we're trying to say, you know, this is important, so make sure somebody's there.
Well, I agree, and that, that group I have never promised, but I'm aware of it.
Yeah, your point's right, other people could come out too. And a lot, a lot of people are, you know, unless it just impacts them immediately, they just, they just hope to go after less than a half.
Well, I mean, for West Hamlin, you know, like Fred, and maybe we could put on our sign a little bit later, I'm just thinking in the future, if we just have a way of communicating it to the public at large, I know the newspapers will mention these things, I don't know whether we can spend money or not, but if we just had a little, you know, a small little ad that, you know, this week, the community meeting will be held at the prison next month, so. Plain County High School was up today.
One ad would cover all those dates. Just, I would say run it one week, it'd cover all, all those April ones, because they're all within ten days. If you run it in the April second, April second, third, April fourth paper, you'd catch all those dates, one time. My salesman hat here.
And then it would go in both papers?
It would go in the Journal Sentinel and the Times at the weekend beforehand, which hits everyone.
That's a good point. They're all close together.
Because everyone gets that paper.
Quarter page would be three hundred dollars or less, I guess, for...
So, two ninety there.
That's special rate.
Well, that, that would be a good lick, that would be good.
Yeah, we can, we can do something, yeah. I'll draw, I'll draw something.
Okay. I'd like to suggest maybe we got May the first, we, we'd meet at three o'clock, that would give us plenty of time, and we could have the annual, be so something, we'd have enough time to consider, not rush.
Good point.
Just a suggestion.
I think there would be lots of details to work out, especially after these meetings are over.
I do too, I think it's gonna be a long process initially.
Yeah, I do too, and, you know, at some point, obviously, we'd want, we'd like to have Dr. Manchin come down from the SBA and address the whole, talk about, you know, their involvement, their role in the process. Yeah, there's, there's much work to do.
A lot to do towards you and I both, because getting going to a new year, just getting Dr. Manchin down here to make, yeah, that's big deal, so hopefully we can... Fred, you can handle that.
I can get some new chat.
Mr. Quinnsip, do we have a projected date that we are wanting to have that along? Mr. Quonkship, do we have a projected date that we are wanting to have this along? We got a ballpark?
That, that's, that's going to be a board decision, that's going to be a superintendent's decision. Uh, what we want to do is by the end of this year, this, this, to be ready to, to say, yes, we're going to go these on the 15th, or yes, we're going to go on the general ballot. Uh, that's, if, if, if we accomplish all this, which we will by July 1st, we'll be positioned to go whenever you want to. And I think that's a decision for discussion. It's not something that, that we ought to, you know, we have talked about maybe in December or even January or maybe in the general election and, and that, that decision is not.
Just a practical question, the board's decision, it'll be this board's decision and not the new board's decision on July 1st. I mean, if the decision that has to be made will be made by our five members currently, correct? You don't see it transcending into the next board?
I, I would, I would leave that to this board. I mean, you're, you are the, the school board. Obviously, there will be some changes come July 1st and that wouldn't even be too late for the, a different date if you wanted to. I mean, we're going to have everything lined up. And so I think, I think probably late this morning, we will identify that and maybe that's one of the discussion points that will be made first, we can start to talk about that. But we just, we haven't nailed that nail. We just want to make sure everything's in line so that whatever the board decides today, that, that, whether they chase the board. And the, the reality is, a future board can change decisions, okay? So that's, you know, so, so we're not going to speak for that future board. But, but we're going to be positioned to move forward. We, the last thing we want is to be hung up, you know, expecting to have an election a certain time, but we don't have everything lined up. So our, our goal is to, to be positioned by July 1st so that it, it's going to be relatively simple to hold the election. But, but that's when, in the community, I, I would hope that there's a strong campaign. But, but that's, that's another step beyond what we are right now.
Great, let me make one more comment here. Um, you know, I was talking about our excess levy and I think we probably need to target January of 2014 as our excess levy election and kind of factor that in as to when we want to have this so that one doesn't affect the other.
Yeah, you know, one around too close.
We had our last levy election in January, so, you know, if we just planned to do it January 2014, if something would happen, it wouldn't pass, that would give us enough time to run it again before, you know, the, June 30th. So I think if everybody kind of agrees with that, then that'll give us some timeframe to run the bond and not overlap.
I would say the latest you want it would be that next month, spring of 2013, but, but we haven't really been thinking about that timeframe. We've been thinking more about either December or January or something like that, or, or maybe.
Bring your bags with you or something.
Well, there's other information here. We're not going to go through it, though. You can kind of look at it at, at your leisure, but I guess the one point worth making is that you look at the unused bonding potential as, as of this year, it's $27 million. So that's, that's certainly a cap or figure that, that, that no one has really discussed definitively what kind of number we're looking at. We need to look at the plan, we need to get the best ideas together and then, then we'll, we'll fix the number two.
Thank you, Ellen.
We've done, we've done some nights and we have this going on. My next concern is the Harts Intermediate School. You know, we've not talked about that in a while, about the, what do we do, what do you all want to do as far as, do we give it to, yes, to the building? Do you want me to approach the commission again? And we also talked about what do we do with the gym? You know, do we give everything to them? Do we want to lease, you know, that part? What are your thoughts? You know, what direction do you all want to need to take with this?
Do they still feel the need that we want that gym?
Yes.
Yes, they can put the school juice.
Okay.
Get all those kids in there.
The fields and all, we, you know, we have to have those if you're going to participate in football, baseball and things like that, so.
But how, you know, do we give it all to them and lease it or do we just give everything except that to them? So you guys just, you know, if I talk with it, how do you want?
What's the last communication that, at, at one time, I thought they were kind of wavering a little bit whether they still wanted to use it to get the building.
It's been such a long time since I have spoken with them. The last communication actually was they kind of wanted, I, I thought they would want to give us a proposal maybe, but I did not hear back from them and so I didn't know what to say that we would like to do, you know, did we want to give, you know, let them have the whole building and let's, you know, kind of lease it.
Kids are evidently served through the electric, push and access stuff.
At one time, though, I mean, I, I understood that they wanted to get the building and then later on, I, I kind of got the impression they weren't certain that they still wanted to do it, so I guess we'll have to see, they'll, they'll have to tell you that.
Right.
It was my understanding they wanted it, but if they weren't going to get the kitchen and the guns and things with them, that they weren't interested in. They wanted it so that they could keep it all together, which we would need it kept all together if we're going to use it.
Well, I'm sure we can work out an agreement where we can both use the kitchen, that would be a hit, but I want that.
Well, and just like, I mean, the use of the ball field and the gymnasium, the locker rooms and all those kind of things, the same thing, what I would like to say, I mean, I'm talking about, very thinking here, is that we have some kind of agreement, maybe similar to what we have with the Lions Club field here in Hamlin where we use the football field, but that it be very specific and then such an agreement that we have first, the school has first preference for all those, those, whether it be the gym or the ball fields or whatever, the locker rooms, that the school has first preference in the use of them.
Have any board members had any calls concerning the condition of the roof of the gym? Any attachments to it? The porch, again? I've been told there was serious leaks.
I've heard.
I know we've recently done some work on that roof up there, back during basketball season, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, it was leaking, everything.
The town Mary, I've been told, has leaks and the, I don't know what you call it, the correct architectural attachment, but the attachment to the gym also has leaks. I was told it leaks in three different areas in the gym property.
I've forgotten, I'm, you're right. That's the kind of things I think we need to, in this, any, if we were to enter, enter into an agreement, you know, it was, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of the facility?
Kids.
You know, well, utility, I'm just talking about maintenance of it all, that if it were to be conveyed to the, the commission and they have it, and then the board has preference for certain parts of the facility, then we go from there. Do they maintain everything, but maybe the board provides a, a, a certain amount of money that we do out here at the ball field each year? But then it's their responsibility to maintain the thing.
Yeah. Because for the use of the community, they could get the year off sale.
Well, we could ever.
I mean, if it was still usable, right.
With a reversion clause, it seems like a better.
And they could lease part of that for the, the other part of the community if I'm not wanting to, I mean, would there be anything wrong with that?
It would kind of like be theirs, but the school would have first priority for certain portions of it and then they would be responsible for the maintenance of the facility and all, but we might provide some help with the, you know, like we do out here in this field where we use the football, softball field.
Yeah, we just need to see if they're interested in it.
Yeah.
Okay. Because they would almost have to have like a schedule with the school so that they would know that the school would be able to use the facilities practice first before they let the community have that. I think that was a certain mistake.
You know, where they would have to maybe give them a little bit of forewarning.
Yeah, we know that we need to really cross with it. Do you love people and so?
Then I don't know, what happens, do we have another re clause in there that the enrollment in the Harts area quadruple, so we get to kind of have the building back?
Well, I was going to ask that question. Has anyone got a projection of the growth in schools in Harts Bridge?
It might be between the players. It's a change of plan. We could make that available.
It's supposed to go down.
There's for certain, there are no room in the build for the, for the school, but we do need to be possessed from one of those buildings. Either eight building or hard times going for the future.
I don't know whether they would agree with all these stipulations, but if we had another stipulation in there that should the student population increase to the point that the board would have to use it, that it could come back to. I mean, I, you know, I'm just, I'm thinking.
You know, I, I think that would be important, too.
Other too. Well, I think, again, most of them, we can break these agreements, but mutual consent would be a part of it.
To get calls.
Yeah.
Not what standard that.
What's that mean?
Not what standard it, Roger.
Oh, well, yeah, we've seen sometimes that.
Yeah, likely go down here.
Somebody needs to fix a roof, number one, before anything else happens, so.
It is take home for those doors that, that they're gone, it's no time at all.
Good luck to his feet.
I, I may know, stand over and ask, if we get together, you know, did you get this? Did you get this? So I'll, I'll try to make contact soon. See that? Come up some kind of draft or agree with them or something.
Have you got anything else?
They're not interested in that.
Well, I didn't, it's off. I mentioned to have the primary school, but is there a feeling on the Harts primary?
I, I don't know if we actually want, we're planning to do it, that there ain't a need for stories or anything to burn.
I think it might as well have all the stuff we were doing in West Hamlin still. Oh, the port, yeah, yeah.
Considering what we paid for a piece of property for the, of the new school, I think we want to hang on to it. Hard to tell what to be working in here.
Don't get us started. We said it there.
And we could say that, but it's by these counselors.
We can, we can do a new school.
You got them off track.
You just had to go there.
I don't, I don't know part of your thoughts about that building.
Check with thing to see if there's any possibility that we might need it for, I can't see whether we need it for storage.
Well, they certainly don't need it to, I'm going to say, we don't need them because your children.
What's the kind of roof that's going on? The primary is.
We have discontinued some of the utilities.
Just water?
Or just water at the Harts primary.
Your main house is still.
But we're trying to get those shut down. We're in the process of moving things out of it to other schools. Actually, didn't you have some people going up there today?
Right, yes.
Other school people?
Yes.
Well, we can, if they're not going to be needed, we can put it up and if it's an agreeable amount from an auction, not do it and stuff.
Well, we may not have choice, it may look like you're landing.
And to check that.
Yeah, we have checked, so we may not even be able to use the story.
No, it doesn't, we were.
It doesn't?
No.
I, you know, we haven't had very good luck with these buildings where we just let them sit right with the others, pleasantly.
Just want to remind you about May the 9th is the new trial date for the Harts court case. Missed trial last time, May the 9th, I just remind you. Because I'd like to have a good experience there.
That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I guess that's, that everything's covered.
Well, I'm making for us to go into consecutive sessions just for quick, it won't take long for, to discuss a.
Personnel matter?
Yeah. It would be personnel.
It's a personnel issue.
I knew you wanted to say personnel. You do not want to get shown that name before, please.
Oh, yeah. So would you give that?
I don't know.
Sorry. It's basically, yeah, I have Charlotte Aldrich. She's terminated, is that? She's terminated?
Thank you. Me turn?
Oh, well, I gave you some.